Lord, we're coming for you this afternoon, oh God. Just want to thank you, Lord, for another day. You've been so good and you've been so kind, oh God. Lord, we just want to thank you this afternoon. We thank you, Lord, for this board. We thank you for our mayor. We thank you, Lord, for the ideas you want to give us to take West Memphis forward. Lord, let us come into agreement. Saturate our mind with your love. Fill us with your word, oh God. Cover us with your blood. Wrap us in your mercy, oh God. Lord, we thank you right now, oh God. Fill this place with your presence, oh God. Lord, Lord, let your word come forth, oh God. Glory to your name, Jesus. Lord, we bless you this evening. We bless you this evening, oh God. You continue to look on Sister Hutchinson, oh God, as you heal her body, God. Lord, we thank you. We give you glory this afternoon. We bless your holy name, oh God. Look on our mayor, God, as he tried to take West Memphis forward, oh God. You look on the council member, oh God. Stir them up, oh God. Put your word down on the inside of them, oh God. Let them, let you thank for them, God. Don't let them thank for you, oh God. Lord, we thank you right now, God. Look on our city as a whole. Cover our city with your blood, oh God. Fill it with your love. Wrap it in your mercy, oh God. Let us come into agreement, oh God. And, Lord, you bless our fire department. Look on our emergency crew, God, as they go to and fro. Look on our police department, oh God. Lord, save them both departments, oh God. Cover them with your blood, oh God, as they go out, oh God. Lift them with your love, oh God. Lord, we thank you, Lord. We thank you for West Memphis, oh God. We thank you for what you're doing. We thank you for what you're going to do. We re-blew the Koran about us, God, in the name of Jesus, Lord. We give you glory this afternoon. We give you praise because it's in your hand, God. Amen and praise God.
Stand and face the flag, please. Quits the reasons to the flag. United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, and infinite, just as God.
I call this meeting to order. Ms. City Clerk, will you call the row, please?
Yes, Mayor. Mayor McClendon?
Present.
City Attorney Stevenson?
Here.
Counselor Kat?
Here.
Counselor Crum?
Here.
Counselor Harris?
Here.
Counselor Hope?
Here.
Counselor Hutchinson? Counselor Mohammed?
Present.
Counselor Monday?
Here.
Counselor Murray?
Here.
Counselor Willis?
Here.
With the court being present, um, eight out of nine, I guess I get to meet started. Um, a week ago, we had our first council meeting of this year, and the airport approved some bids, which, uh, Counsel McCrone stepped in at any time, correct me, but they approved the bids and, but it was never properly placed on our bid openings. And the procedure is that we need to approve the bids and then send the bids back to the airport, like we know when they do. Uh, can I get a motion and second to add those bids from the airport?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's added to the agenda. Uh, now can I get a motion and second to approve the airport bids? You make the motion?
I make a motion that we approve the airport bids.
Second.
Uh, in discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? I refer those back to the airport. Uh, did we have any corrections to the minutes? I spoke with Counselman Kat. He sent T S N. Were there any other corrections? Hearing now, can I get a motion and second to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, the minutes are approved. We had no old business. It's on the turn over to the City Attorney now. New business?
New business, I make a motion that we read R one and R two by title only.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's read by title only. City Attorney?
Thank you, Ms. Mohammed. Uh, this is a resolution of intent to make a lease purchase agreement for Jaguar for the 20-acre tandem property located in the rail port logistics park.
Uh, hearing that, uh, Philip Serrera came up and gave a description of what they were doing. Can I get a motion and second to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion from that point? Hearing now, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Ms. Clerk, would you get that resolution number?
Yes, sir. That resolution number will be 2250.
2250, alright. City Attorney, R two, which we, they talked about, table it until the next, uh, to Wednesday.
I make a motion that we table R two until, um, we meet on Tuesday of next week and have a new council meeting to pass proposed budget.
That's Wednesday. The council meeting Wednesday, the, the, the discussion.
I thought I said that, meeting on Tuesday?
That's the work session.
The work session, that's what I meant. I didn't say it right. I knew what I was saying, but I didn't say it right to your satisfaction. We're going to have a, a work session on Tuesday to discuss budget. And hopefully, we can get everything together, and then we'll have a city council meeting on Wednesday for passage. Did I do it right?
Yes, ma'am.
So we're tabling it until?
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's tabled until Wednesday. Permission request. I need permission from the council. We already approved a grant writer position, but it was, uh, approved as a contractor. I want to turn it to full-time, to full-time position. Can I get a motion and second?
Motion to, uh, turn the grant writer's position into a, a full?
Full-time.
Permanent position.
Yes, sir.
Second. Second.
In discussion?
This position now is, is not going to require any more money. I think that position is already.
Yes, already. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Permission's, uh, granted. Thank you. Committee reports. Uh, I'm going to start with the Chamber of Commerce.
Okay, just a second here. The, uh, Chamber of Commerce Board met on January 13th and approved their annual budget. Uh, the chamber is exploring different, uh, features to bring to the city's Freedom Fest and the tree lighting events to encourage the community engagement. They have updated the relocation packets and the business booklets and the printing directions are, are, um, are comple, not, not complete, but they're being in process, uh, which is part of the contract with the tourist and economic development departments. Emily, um, was out due to a, um, oh, she's out today due to a leadership, junior leadership program, and she says if anybody has any questions or suggestions, they can contact her at the chamber. That completes the, uh, Chamber of Commerce report.
Will you want to move forward, utility?
Utilities, yes, sir. West Memphis Utilities met on, uh, January the 14th. The Safety Director Brett Sims reported, uh, there were 65 days since the last recordable injury and 449 days since the last lost time injury. Uh, the utility currently has 11 open positions, um, of 83. I don't know what percent that is, but, uh, that's 83 are the budgeted positions, and they have 11 of them that are open. Uh, quotes and permission to sell the scrap transformers, um, was presented by General Manager Todd Peterson. He recommended the highest quote, which was Sunbelt Solomon Solutions, for a total of $7,108.50. Motion passed unanimously. And they approved the employee handbook, and that motion passed, uh, unanimously. And that completes the utility.
Thank you, Counselman Crum.
Thank you.
Uh, A M P?
Ms. Patricia?
Yes, sir. I'm going to present the A M P minutes for Councilmember Monday. Um, the financial report. Jim Jackson presented the financial report, and a motion was made to pass it unanimously. On old business, Kenny Farrell slash Gateway Point, City Attorney Mike Stevenson covered the legal procedures that has been placed since before his time as City Attorney. It was stated that he has been in contact with Mr. Farrell's attorney, Chris Travis. Mr. Stevenson suggested that the commission either change the procedures or keep the current ones in place. Okay. Mr. Travis pleaded his case according to his, his review of the procedures. Jim Jackson also stated the commission was not looking for a consultant at that time. Commissioner Scott Ferguson made the motion to continue using the same procedures that they have been using in the past. Um, warehouse space. Project is still being worked on, uh, with the square footage flags will still, will, will still be in place. Sky cops are in and will be installed. Uh, A M P collections. Jim Jackson stated the individual collections report will be available soon for the commission to review. On new business, the Mississippi River Monster Catfish Tournament. This event has been sponsored in the past. The event requested a larger amount for 2021 in the amount of $10,000. Due to a lack of emotion, it failed. West Memphis Chamber of Commerce 2021. The West Memphis Chamber of Commerce contract renewal for 2021 was voted on and agreed. A, increase A M P form 2% to 3%. West Memphis Mayor Marco McClinton presented to the A M P a request for the commission to raise their A M P taxes from 2% to 3% to help with the Parks Department and the general fund of the city's budget. Commissioner Scott Ferguson made the motion to support the increase contingent upon the West Memphis City Council's approval. Uh, reappointment. They're asking that Dr. Scott Ferguson's term as, as commissioner was up and requested that he be reappointed for another four-year term. Commissioner Mike Tell for Dr. Ferguson to be, made the motion for Dr. Ferguson to be reappointed for the four-year term. Uh, the auditorium closure. Jim stated that with the new mandate from the governor's office on capacities that have changed to 10 people, he has suggested to the commission that the auditorium should close for any event at least until April 1st, 2021. The commission agreed to his suggestion. That concludes the A M P report.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. City Clerk, Airport Commission?
January the 21st of this morning, the Airport Commission meeting highlights. The notice to proceed was granted January the 18th for the rehab project on hangar number three. The FAA has approved a 9010 grant for 2021 for a new beacon and for the design phase of the North Apron Rehab. That was it. It was a quick meeting this morning.
I thank you, Counselman Willis. Um, there was no other committees that met. Uh, I had no presentations. Uh, announcements, I guess I'd say, this is our first council meeting, I guess, with a new president and vice president, President Biden and, uh, president, yes. So, Ms. Harris, President Harris, I'm sorry, Vice President Harris. So just congratulation to them on our new president and vice president of the United States.
I'd like to make a motion, if you could, I'd like to make a motion that we add to the agenda to nominate Mr. Fred Leonard as City Treasurer.
Okay.
Second. Do you want a motion?
We got a motion and second to add the, uh, Mr. Leonard for the City Treasurer position. Uh, is there any discussion right now?
Understand the importance of having the treasurer slot filled because I'm doing that job. So, I might just see that happen. There was another nominee. Uh, I don't know if he still has an interest, and I know about four weeks ago, we opened the floor up for additional nominees. I'm anxious for this to move forward as much as anybody, but I didn't know if anybody actually submitted another resume. Um, that was, that was my concern.
Well, it's.
I didn't know if there was anything else that was out there.
Only one other person that I know that's interested in. Supposed to meet with him Tuesday.
Well, I made the, I made the, a motion to, to, um, to put Mr. Leonard on the agenda to be nominated as City Treasurer. We've been doing this for months now, and I've made that motion, and, and we did get a second, so now it's time to vote.
Call the row.
We, uh, can I, can I make a statement?
Uh, sure.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. The, uh, the initial, this has been dragging on like Counsel Mohammed said, and, and it really needs to be filled. And the initial candidates, we only had two that sent in resumes, and one of them has declined the position. So that only le, left one, and that one was Fred Leonard. Now, we could keep dragging this thing out, but that's not fair to the council, and it's not fair to anybody else.
To the city.
In the city, and it's the council's responsibility to get a treasurer in place. So, I say we take a vote on Fred Leonard.
Who, who declined the position?
Could I, could I say that?
Well, of course, I just talked to him. Actually, it's a meeting Tuesday with him.
Suter did.
Well, there's a meeting this Tuesday with him about this position.
Actually, it's the council's decision.
Yeah, it's the council's decision, so.
As to who will be appointed as City Treasurer.
Sure.
I think the person that applied earlier, I thought it was the actual finance director, not the treasurer. That's what we, is that right?
Yes, they thought it was just.
That's right. So he declined.
They were willing to do it if both of them were tied together.
Yep.
Just like it was. But at this point, I talked to him the other day, and he doesn't want it.
This, this is also, uh, it will get Counsel, Counselor Kat back up here with us on this council and, and, uh, you know, take this responsibility off of him. And he's been doing a great job with it, don't get me wrong, but, uh, he was elected as a council person. Right.
I, I would like to be sure that, that other person declined. Because I think, you know, if, if, if he's interested, we should consider both.
Alright, then we can make a motion. Who is the other person? We can put both of them on the agenda today.
Well, you made a mo, you already made a motion and second, so Ms. Patricia, call the row, Fred Leonard.
We're calling the roll on Mr. Fred Leonard.
Yes, ma'am. No, no, Ms. Mohammed's motion. She, she made a motion to add to the agenda.
Is like, are we adding to the agenda? Did everybody say yes?
Okay, so we're going to vote on whether to add, uh, Frank, the nomination of Frank or appointment of Fred Leonard, okay?
Alright.
Thank you. Just to add it to the agenda, that's for sure.
We got a motion by Ms. Mohammed and a second by Counselman Crum to add to the agenda, so all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright now, Ms. Mohammed?
Now, I'd like to make a motion that we nominate Mr. Fred Leonard as City Treasurer to the city of West Memphis, Arkansas.
Get a second?
Second.
Alright, let me call the row. Call the row, Ms. City Clerk.
Thank you. This is a vote to appoint Fred Leonard as City Treasurer. Counselor Kat?
Yes.
Counselor Crum?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Counselor Hope?
Yes.
Counselor Hutchinson?
Absent.
Counselor Mohammed?
Yes.
Counselor Monday?
No.
Counselor Murray?
No.
Counselor Willis?
Yes.
I mean, yes, but.
One, two, three, four, five yeses. We have one abstention, and we have one, two, two no's.
The motion fails.
I would just like to say, this is really ludicrous, because we should have our own individual minds. This has been dragging on for so very, very long. Have any of you talked to Mr., the other gentleman to see if he really wants it?
We would talk to him Tuesday, because he's going to meet with me Tuesday, so.
Okay, but it's not your choice.
I mean, it, it's not.
It's the city council's choice.
That's, that's not totally accurate, because I actually, because I made the vote to pass that, that, no, I'm sorry. I do have a vote if it comes to five. I can't.
If it comes to five.
And it was five, and I just decided until I talk to the other candidate.
That is true, if it comes to five. But we've been doing this for, what, six months or longer? And if anyone didn't want to vote for this, they should have brought somebody up before now. I think Mr. Leonard is a really good choice. I'm sure the other person is as well, and everybody has her own vote, but I would just like to say that I'm really, really disappointed in a few council members that I really trust. I, I am. One of them, doesn't matter, but for a couple of them, I'm totally disappointed, but God knows best. God knows best, that's all I have to say.
The reason I passed because we spoke and hold it up for it then until June.
June?
Yeah.
What do you mean, until June?
Because that's what we agreed on, with the budget, when we passed this budget.
Now, the, the City Treasurer's position is already there. That money is there, just like the city council's money is there. Isn't, this, this is no budget change or budget increase or decrease. Just like our budget is here, he gets the same pay that we get. So that money is already there. There's no reason for, uh, hold up on that. We shouldn't be using that particular monies for anything except for what is designated, designated for.
Excuse me?
So that's fine. We are bringing up.
Allow me to ask a question. Are we, uh, appointing someone that we know and like, or we appointing someone that has the accounting experience to be assistant to Ms. Tori Perry? Because I think if we just going to get someone to fill that role, as many business owners here would like to do that job. I, I, as mayor, because I have to deal with this budget on a database and with every decision that I make, and then whomever you choose, whether it's Mr. Leonard, Mr. Suter, whomever you do, make sure that individual has the accounting or some type of accounting experience in. And I haven't yet seen that, I guess, on Mr. Leonard's resume.
Well, Mr. Leonard runs State Farm. Just doesn't have agents that, that wouldn't be qualified. He is totally qualified. And as far as knowing and liking, I don't know Mr. Leonard. I do like him because I like everybody. But as far as knowing him on a personal level, if you're directing that to me, knowing and liking, the answer for me is no. We just need a City Treasurer. I think he would be a good man for the job. I don't even know Mr. Suter. I, I mean, if he walked in here right now, I don't even know if that's him or not. But if you're directing that question to me, I can give you my answer. From a pure heart, it's no. I do not know Mr. Leonard on a personal basis. I don't even talk to him. I may see him at a function and speak. I just know that his credentials are great. I don't even have insurance with him, but I think his credentials are really good. We all got his resume and had an opportunity to read it. So from that resume, we should have seen that he is most certainly qualified.
And my, you know, my concern is, I, I like both gentlemen, but my concern is that both should be considered, and it should be put out front for everybody to decide.
Well, someone could have brought the other gentleman up even before today. The resumes have been on, on record for months now. Someone could have brought him up even before today. Because we, we need to go ahead and feel it.
If he'd have wanted it, but he told me point blank he did not want it.
Well, I, I think at this point, you all, you all made your vote.
I just, yeah, the vote has been made. I just wanted to, I just wanted to explain myself and answer your question. I do not know you.
I mean, I know that it was brought up by the former councilman, this clerk, so I didn't know where that came from, because I think when he made the motion, you seconded it. So then it came before the council, so at that point, but I mean, I like both individuals, and I know that we need, uh, Ms. Tori, well, welcome to help. Uh, but you all made your decision, so.
Let me make a statement. Actually, what we have now is the same thing we had before, uh, whenever Frank was, was, was the finance director, except, uh, Mr. Kat has taken that job over to, you know, as far as the treasurer to me, plus our liaison to the, to the office.
Well, we had made a, we had made a, uh, an ordinance that split those jobs up, so you had two separate jobs. You did, we, we did that when, after, uh, after our last, uh, finance slash treasurer, uh, but that's what happened. We, we decided to break the two jobs and two individual jobs, and we felt like there was a conflict of interest with one person doing both jobs.
And I want to add this to, uh, Counselman Crum, you was, you absolutely correct in that statement, but you were one of the ones that was on council during the time Frank was doing both jobs, and never, never did you ever say, when Frank was alive, and heard that we need to split those two positions up?
I think we did. I think we.
No, I'm not, that's what I'm talking about we. I'm talking about you.
Oh, I think I did. I talked about it two or three times.
Well, that's neither here nor there. We're bringing it to the agenda. Hopefully, we can get some resolve and get us a City Treasurer, because this is a city of the first class, and we need all of our people in place. It would be the same if we didn't have a city attorney. We need everybody in their proper place. So, uh, I, I, like I say, in several people, I am, I'm, I'm, one of them, it didn't matter, but two, I am kind of disappointed, but it's okay. I'll get over it.
Mayor, if I may, uh, the positions were always separate. It was just held by one person. There were always two salaries budgeted.
But he only received one salary.
I'd love to get a confirmation on Tuesday, whether the interest is there or not, find out for sure. Get this right back on the Wednesday agenda to be dealt with, uh, once and for all. And so we can move forward.
Right, I agree to that. I do. I do. I think that would be great. We'll put it on the agenda Wednesday, so we can move forward. Thank you, Trace, uh, Counselor Kat, and thank you for voting for it. And you're doing a wonderful job. I appreciate you so much. You and I talked about it as well.
Alright, any other announcements? Yes.
And I appreciate the comments, but, and, and, and I think in the municipal meeting, I listened in. I do not have a municipal accounting degree. Ms. Perry and Mr. Martin have taught me what I know to this point, and it's still not enough to do that job. So regardless of who you appoint, I don't believe either one of them having a municipal accounting degree. So you'll need to possibly consider redefining that job description a little bit, giving more authority to that position to Ms. Perry, and a little less authority to who you appoint, because they probably don't have that degree, and that's really what you need if you're going to send them to the state of Arkansas to talk about audit issues.
Well, I think, really, when we were all elected, we had nothing. We knew nothing. And if this person, whomever it is, the other gentleman or the one that I nominated today, they'll have to go to the league and go to all the various schools and all the various meetings, like city clerk or anyone else, to become certified and, and to work for this city. And I don't know if either one of them have the degree or not. I'm not sure.
I doubt seriously if they do, in all honesty.
But they'll have to, they're going to be required and mandated to take the necessary classes to get certified, like, you know, like we all do.
Not every treasurer in the state of Arkansas is a municipal accountant. They don't have that degree. Um, I just know having a really good understanding of that is crucial to being able to really represent the council, to bring you the reports, to be able to respond and answer to your questions. I have fought through it for the last 20 years, and, uh, I do not have Ms. Perry's expertise, that's for sure. She teaches me every day something, but she probably anxious to get rid of me also. So, but again, hopefully, we can get a confirmation on Tuesday, get it back on the agenda on Wednesday, and, and, you know, get it finished.
Thank you so much.
Alright. Uh, Jim?
Jim?
Yeah, we, we, I'll go back up to that one. We have, uh, in appointments to reappoint, uh, Scott Ferguson to the A M P commission. Can I get a motion and second to?
I make a motion, we, uh, reappoint him to commission.
In discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? He's reappointed. Uh, last one of our businesses is, uh, do you know what happened? Other, one more announcement by Tracy about the ordinance number.
When the council read the handbook, you read it three times, and then we realized we've kind of gotten out of kilter with that. And ordinance number 2566 was kind of earmarked for that, but it never was approved. And when the next ordinance came up, we assigned it 2567, so 2566 has never been used, because that was the number that was assigned to the handbook, because it was tabled. So I'm respectfully ask the council that you table our. So I'm respectfully ask the council that you table, or excuse me, you void ordinance 2566 so we can get it in the book and not bring it up at a later date after a, a newer number. So I think that's probably the best way to handle it, I think that's why the municipal league loves to see it done. We just simply void ordinance 2566.
I get a motion in second to do that.
Second.
In discussion?
Is there any changes that can still be submitted?
Changes to?
Huh?
Changes to?
Uh, the nepotism rule, it doesn't have anything in there. It mentions every relative you got except siblings, your brothers and sisters.
You're talking about the handbook?
Yeah.
Um, the council, there were some changes made to that and it was approved at the last meeting. Um, and again, it's just like any other policy you have within the city, it can be amended at any time.
It'd have to be amended by ordinance.
Okay, okay.
Uh, just simply take it back to the Personnel Committee, they'll review any additions or corrections and then bring them back to the council.
Anything else? Uh, next order of business is gonna be the citizen request, this is Ms. Latoya Logan here. If you will, come forward, give your name and your address and, uh, the council normally give you five minutes to address them.
Hey, everyone, my name is Latoya. And, um, I was trying to start my own transportation business. Um, it was gonna call Lord to Live. I feel like that we need another transportation going around due to the coronavirus that's coming out, well, that we have out. I feel like that I could be able to help a lot of families. The ride, um, the cost ain't but $10 to get you wherever you need to go, or even if you don't wanna get out and you know that the coronavirus come, I have a plan where you can text me everything you need and I go get it and I bring it to you so you won't have to get out. Um, I have, I, I done started already, so it's getting there and a lot of people love it, so I'm just trying to make my own business out of it and I'm trying to do it the correct way to get my license forward. Um, I got a lot of people behind me with it, so I said, you know what, let me come over here and make my own business out of it. I'm already loving it, I got a lot of people behind me with it and it's something that I'd love to do and it's something that I wanna do and I was just hoping that I had y'all approving on it, so.
She have, she have an application in, go ahead.
I've given all of the council members her, uh, the applications, we have her background, criminal records checking and everything, but the regular procedure is she comes before you today, tells you what kind of business she wants. We are required to notify every existing transportation business that she has applied for an application and that allows them to come back and offer any objections at the next council meeting, so no decision can be made till then. But also, if you're doing it already, you need to stop. You don't have a business license, we talked about that, and transporting people, because I think when we talked, you said it was going to be medical? Yes. It wasn't, and, and I guess a taxi service is a taxi service regardless, but if you are going to do errands and picking up groceries and stuff, that's a second license and so we'll, we'll talk about that. Yes, ma'am. I just, I, I like to put it all out there. Yeah, I want to be honest with it, I want, you know, and I know I need y'all to help me, so I just want to go from there.
Thank you. In two weeks, be back in two weeks. And our next council meeting, the council.
I wanted you to over to pull my arm off my back.
Yeah, I'm a little scared, 'cause I wanted to cry, I don't know, wow. Yeah, I love it, I was scared.
Thank you.
Alright, thank y'all.
Thank you.
Is there anything else the council have? No, you, you fine, thank you. The council have anything else before we finish? Hearing, I'm gonna get a motion in second to, uh, to John.
So moved.
Sit. All of a favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose?